Good morning. We'll call this meeting of Community Emergency Services Committee to order. Will you please file with me for indication? Our most high and mighty Lord, we thank you for all of the gifts that you bestowed upon us, signs of your love and grace. We ask for your protection for all of our first responders, all of our law enforcement, everyone who keeps our people safe so that they may prosper and do things in your name. We ask you to come reside with us today so that we may do what is pleasant in your eyes. Amen.
Pledge.
Pledge.
Flag.
United States of America.
Public.
All right, we have quorum. This morning, all three commissioners are here. We have the minutes of the previous meeting. Have you gentlemen been able to look them over?
Second.
I'm so moved. Okay. Mr. Johnson, their agenda?
I believe the agenda's set, Mr. Chairman.
All right, very good. Thank you. We, I would like to recognize Troop Ten of our Boy Scouts. I knew I saw a uniform back there. Would you mind standing up and letting us know who you are?
What school do you go to? Welcome.
All right. Thank you very much. Don't show off that fire badge this morning.
Okay.
Please. Thank you for being here. Consent agenda, nothing. We'll move right into debate. And new bid in community services. Mr. Luton?
Thank you. First item for consideration today is the USA BMX Gold Cup Championship Contract. This would be the third Gold Cup event. We will have hosted at the track. We hosted one in fifteen and one in eighteen. This is one of their larger events. We would expect five to six hundred riders and significant number of room nights generated from this in September, twenty-four through twenty-six. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next, sir.
Another event, this is a Georgia Bass Chapter Federation Adult and Collegiate Fishing Tournament. The collegiate tournaments do probably the best in terms of number of anglers and number of hotel rooms generated. So this is a good impact for the $2,500 host fee, and staff would recommend approval.
When's the last time we did this?
We've-
Is this a new one?
This is, we did, we've done this one before. This is part of several college and high school ones that we've been targeting the last couple of years, trying to target more of those than the traditional, just adult ones. Of course, we have those too, but this is probably the third year I think we've done this.
Yeah, very good. Move to consent. Second.
And moved. Next, sir.
Next item for consideration is a MOU with UGA Cooperative Extension and the Board of Regents. This is just an updated version of the MOU that we currently have in place. The last one was executed in 2015 with an ongoing term. UGA just has sort of a new format for their MOU, so we're just taking this for approval. It just clarify, adds some detail and clarifies the personnel section and details out that we will be compensating them through the cooperative contract pay option outlined in Addendum B.
Did it change any of the dollars that flowed?
No, sir. No, sir.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
Question on that?
Yes, sir.
I think what we- other people or is that just a supplement that comes from, from us or is that a issue?
In what respect? In respect to salaries and respect to operations?
Because it may be, I mean, different, a, different state position, but supplement. So I guess that does it.
Yeah, it's just like the judge. Any, any other state position, the county can supplement any way they want to supplement, and somebody in Columbia County could be making more or less than somebody in Richmond County.
Okay, just checking that. But we just report that to, to the University of Georgia, didn't we?
We do, we do. And they, and they go through our budget process, you know, when we go through that entire process, they have their state budget, and then they come in and they'll ask for anything that's ancillary to that in the form of supplement. So for example, this year, we're paying for part of a van. The state's paying for the majority of that, and then we're paying for a piece, maybe half and half, but we're paying for a piece of that. And that's, we work those out each budget cycle.
Thank you.
So moved to consent. Sir?
The next item is amendments to the CVB bylaws. The board recently unanimously voted in, in May to accept the following changes: removing Savannah Rapids Regional Visitors Center Coordinator as ex-officio member, combining the Finance and Executive Committees, combining the Secretary and Treasurer roles, and changing the manner of acting percentage to ninety percent, from ninety percent to seventy-five percent. Staff would recommend approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved. Next, sir.
And finally, Animal Services Donation. Augusta Prep Day School would like to donate $694. Animal Services Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, and thank you to Augusta Prep. No added items? Mr. Driver, any legal matters? Very good, thank you. Have staff reports?
What about the lease with State Properties Commission? Am I missing something? Going to get to that?
We did, so, okay, yeah, we'll go back and add that. So that was an item added, and I'm sorry that I, that I missed that on the agenda. Mr. Chairman, for your consideration, we'll take up that item with the State Properties Commission. That's okay.
All right, thank you, sir. Fire and Emergency Services?
No, we'll, no, we'll take it.
We'll take it up now?
Yes.
Under one, that would be one B. One B one.
I tell you what, let's, let me do this. If it's okay with the committee, let me skip this, and I'll add this to the next committee. We'll be better prepared for that, if that's okay.
Very good.
We do that, strike this from this committee. I know it was added, and then it wasn't. The reason for this, let me explain this, because I think it's prudent. You know, we were under a temporary restraining order until late last night, and we didn't know if we could bring this item or not. So we decided that we could bring it, because the temporary restraining order was lifted last night. So that's what's got us a little bit of out of sorts. But if it's okay with the committee, we will not take this item up here, and we will add it to Chairman Richardson's committee, if that's okay, in just a few minutes.
That'll be fine.
Okay?
Need a motion to move that to the next committee?
Think so. We don't have to make motions.
No, there's nothing, there's nothing.
Okay, very good. So that's, that's one one B one. Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Driver, you still have nothing. Chief, staff reports?
I have, for your information, the sponsor summaries for the year-to-date and the month of May, and also our year-to-date budget report, and I'll be glad to-
I don't have any questions.
Okay, very good. Do you have any commissioners' public comments? Nothing in executive session? And I'm sorry we got mixed up again, Mr. Johnson.
No, that's, that's our fault, Mr. Chairman. I apologize. We'll, we'll get straight here in just a few minutes. If we could have a few after this meeting, but-
Very good. All right. We move to adjourn this meeting. Eight thirty-nine?
I two A one.
I two A one.
That's correct. I two A one will be a lease with the State Properties Commission, and we'll get to that item at the end of the agenda with your approval.
Presentations, nothing agenda, we'll go right into the debate.
Yes, sir, I'm going to ask Mr. Prather to step up and talk to us about a couple of these.
Okay.
Morning, Mr. Horn, Stephen.
How y'all doing?
Morning.
Got a couple of items up for y'all's consideration this morning. The first is a proposal from Cranston Engineering to conduct our survey of the area out front for our new building A. As you know, we've started our programming of that building and some schematic design, and we'll use that survey in conjunction with that, as well as the final construction documents. So staff recommends approval of awarding this to Cranston Engineering an amount of $15,400.
What's the ETA on this whole project?
So hopefully by the middle, end of August, we'll be done with our schematic design package. So we'll probably get everybody's buy-in on approval of the actual design and layout, programming of spaces. At that point, we can decide if we want to move directly into construction documents, and if that's the case, probably six months of construction documents at the most. So ideally, we would have this advertising about this time next year.
Move to consent.
Second.
Second item up is Wildwood Park Area One Bath House. This is a project that we've recently completed. This is the final change order, which is a deduct in the amount of $4,000, $4,008.12 for final accounting purposes.
We actually saved $4,000. Move to consent quickly.
If you haven't had a chance to go look at that, it's, it's been really nice. We're, we're going to be doing some more work out there, so. Third item is the Evans Library Upgrade Project. As you know, we did a, a first phase of this in the, in the main hall and the lobby where we, we placed the fixtures LED. This is a similar scope. This is in the double-height area on the north side of the building. So this is to award Gulf Electric with this project an amount of $14,300.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
Last item I have up for you, for your consideration, is a proposal for Studio Three Design Group to provide professional services. This is for Area Two and Three renovations. This would renovate the Area Two Bath House and extend that bath house for an ADA accessible shower and toilet. And it's also the renovation of the Area Three restroom area by the playground. This is very similar size and scope to the Area One restroom we've already completed. This is to award this contract, Studio Three Design Group, for $38,500. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen.
Next item we have for you is our county-wide exterminating service renewal number three. This is our third and final renewal with this contract period. It does cover the entire county. You'll see the line codes laid out there before you. Staff is recommending the, the final renewal with Northwestern, Northwest Exterminating Company.
Early or middle, or January?
I'd say January. We had to pack it out, just so we could go through it, have it in front of you, have the company ready to go July one.
They local? I guess they are, they have to be.
They are. We actually, our contract started with, I believe it was called Busy Bee Terminating. They were bought out by Northwest. They assumed the contract that we had.
Move to consent.
Second.
Next one I have for you is a county-wide elevator maintenance renewal. This is our final renewal for this one. This was Otis Elevator. Staff has recommended approval of this final renewal. And again, we'll follow the same schedule for new contract next year.
I have to admit, there are not a lot of options in this market, is there?
There's not.
Not a lot of people in this business. Move to consent.
Second.
So moved.
Next one I have for you is a request from a developer for an easement for a development called Woods at Reed Creek. This is off of Furious Ferry Road. They're looking to construct thirty-seven homes on seventeen acres. In order to do so, they have to have access to county sewer. Per a letter we received from the developer, they have looked at several ways of accessing county sewer, and their most feasible way they can find is to go through county-owned green space. They did provide us a letter stating why they were looking for, all that detail is attached to your packet here. One of the things I want to point out is the environmental engineer has determined that the crossing of the creek and the wetland disturbance will be temporary. It might be temporary to install it, but if you approve this, we're going to have a twenty-foot wide easement through our green space with a sewer line on it that county staff will have, Mr. Gordon's staff will have to keep maintained for access. So this is not a temporary impact of this green space. It's a permanent impact through this green space. But we do have the packet here that has been requested from the developer. They have maps here showing you what they're looking to do. At this point, staff has recommended that we do not grant easement across green space.
So in moving this consent, we are denying easement across our green space?
The staff's recommendation.
Move to consent.
Move to consent. Second.
So moved. Horn, I believe you're up.
Yes, sir. The first item we have is we received bids on the relocation and updating of the Dallin Drive sewer line, and the low bid was submitted by Fortis Engineering Solutions in the amount of $704,925.15. Our budget on that project was $750,000, so staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
Second item is the Kennedy Family. They wish to construct a deck that encroaches on our sewer easement. Basically, the stairs and a little concrete pad, and we'll go out over our easement. It really won't affect us that much, and we recommend approval.
They understand if they get this, and something goes wrong, they're going to lose their deck.
They do. They have the agreement. They understand that, yeah, they will have to remove that, or we will remove it to, to repair the sewer line in that area. They're aware of it.
Move to consent.
Second.
The last item is Herford Farm Road widening. We're having to work with OT to relocate our water lines, our water lines on Herford Farm Road, and we're going to get some consulting help on that project for a estimated fee of 5.5% of construction cost. Staff recommends approval of this proposal.
Now, how, well, this is in T-Splus two, right, which has not started collections? So how does all this work?
But we will, we've, right now, we're using MPO money to do our design. The money we got, it's federal dollars. It came through the state, through the arts program. We're using that for our design. So this money will actually come out of Ward Utilities Fund, the five and a half percent. When we get down to building the project, we've run the estimate on it. Right now, we're, we're higher than what we think we're, our estimate is higher than what we think we're going to get as far as collections go. If that's the case, Water Utility will have to eat the brunt of, of moving these lines. However, if there's any money in TIA, we will do all that work with TIA dollars. It's the same scenario we just had with Furious Ferry Road. We're going to do everything we can with TIA dollars. However, we've got to start making steps now to be prepared to spend those TIA dollars, which is what Mr. Gordon is doing here.
Good work. Move to consent.
Second.
Guys?
Sir? Yes, sir. The first item I have for your consideration is a resolution twenty-one dash twenty-seven to amend streetlight district number one twenty-seven, Shea Grove Estates. Staff received a request from a resident to install an additional streetlight on Samaria Lane due to lack of lighting. Georgia Power went out and reevaluated the area, and it was deemed to be warranted. So Georgia Power recommends we add one additional streetlight on it, an existing pole, at an annual utility cost of $134.16. Staff recommends adoption of that amendment.
Ben?
So moved.
The next item we have is an easement encroachment agreement at twenty-twenty-two Grace Avenue. The owners have constructed a retaining wall in our drainage and utility easement. We do have infrastructure in that easement. It's an eighteen-inch HP storm drainage line. Staff has gone out and inspected the line. It's in good shape. We, we see no issues with it, with the retaining wall creating any problems for us. And so this is basically a retroactive easement and encroachment agreement. Staff recommends approval. They are, they have been made aware of this, correct?
Move to consent.
Second.
The next item we have is for an update to our existing design supplement A, which is our, is our pavement design supplement to our engineering standards. It was last updated in nineteen ninety-four. The supplement is basically provides directive to engineers that they are required to do certain sampling, testing, and provide certain design guidelines to utilize when they're putting together a pavement design for our subdivisions. It's, as you can imagine, is out of date. It refers to the Army Corps and several places, their standards, first Lime Stabilized Base, which is rarely used anymore, and it provides a minimum pavement section of six inches of stone and two inches of asphalt. Or the new supplement basically modernizes the supplement to make, ensure that engineers are using up-to-date standards, engineering standards to provide, they're actually doing the proper field testing. They're providing us those results. They're doing the proper traffic analysis that we've set the guidelines for. They're providing those results to us. And it's, it also provides minimum required sections. It's not just a section two. It says, if you have this soil condition and you have this traffic, then you have to use this pavement section. Either this pavement section without soil cement modified base, or this pavement with soil cement modified subbase. So it, it greatly enhances the county's oversight of what's being installed on roads that we are going to eventually take over. They're going to be dedicated to us.
The third party will be telling the developer, it won't be the county, the party-
Currently, an engineer, developers hire engineers to put together plans.
Right, right.
So it'll still be that way. However, these requirements require a third-party geotechnical engineer to go out and-
Inspect.
And do the, the testing and provide those results stamped by that third-party geotech to the county with their pavement design recommendation.
Have we reviewed this at all with the building community?
We have. About four or five weeks ago, we sat down with them, went through the whole thing. Steve Exley and I were there. Went through it all. We received some minor comments. We've addressed those. We've sent it back out. We have not received any major pushback. Now, that's not to say it's not going to happen between now and commission, but to date, we've addressed their, their concerns.
How much cost are we adding to development?
We're going from the minimum pavement section that are required now is six inches of stone and two inches of asphalt to six inches of stone and three and a half inches of asphalt, which has to be put down in two lifts. We're also adding specifications in here that if they go in and add on to an existing subdivision or roadway, that they can't just add on to it. So say they designed this neighborhood for fifty houses today, and the pavement section passes, and then two years later, they come back and design for two hundred more houses. They have to come back now and update, if y'all pass this, update the existing, make sure it either meets structural integrity to accommodate those additional two hundred houses, or they have to provide a mitigation plan.
What, what this is doing is this will put that on that neighborhood that is using that and not on the backs of the taxpayer.
That's correct.
Come back in, roads that are substandard. Is that correct?
That's correct. Our roads and bridges operations are stretched extremely thin. Their, their funding is limited, and, and we cannot continue, we, we just financially can't continue to keep up with repairing all these new roads that are falling apart two years after they're built.
Are we still having that issue?
Yes.
Thought we addressed that.
Addressed a lot of it, however, still continuing to fall apart. So we changed from lime mixed subgrade to a cement mixed subgrade, and they, they just fall back doing the bare-bones minimum they can. This was- This was, this basically takes our minimum standards out. Right now, it says, here's the minimum. You need to test it, but here's the minimum. They go, okay, great, here's your minimum. This does have a minimum, but it makes them go through a lot of testing, say, what their minimum is.
And provide the results.
And it is, that's right.
And I would appreciate getting a, not an all-inclusive list, but I'd like to know list, just see what's been built within the last two years, what's failed. I'd like to understand that.
Sure. I'll work on that.
I met with Mr. Myers last week, and I discussed that and asked him whatever, and I think he's got a staff member going.
Yeah, Mr. Vera is doing that right now.
Gathering that information, so we'll be able to pack it by time we come for the final.
That'd be great. Thank you. Move to consent.
Second.
I'll move.
The next item we have is an easement plat for MBH Holdings Miramar Drive Extension in Martinez. It's for the acceptance of improvements to include a new water line and respective easement as depicted on plat prepared by James G. Swift and Associates. They did April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. MBH Holdings subdivided four lots at the end of Miramar Drive Extension, and the plat shows the water line and easement to be dedicated to the county. Staff recommends acceptance contingent upon staff's approval with a two-year warranty period from the date of written acceptance of the as-built drawing.
Move to consent.
Second.
I'll move.
The next item is an easement plat for Sprint Food Stores. This is off Wrightsboro Road across from Brigadier Landing. This is for the acceptance of improvements to include a new water, excuse me, a new sewer line and respective easement as depicted on a plat prepared by James G. Swift and Associates dated May sixth, twenty twenty-one. Sprint Food Stores is in the process of building a store, and this plat shows the sewer line and easement to be dedicated to Columbia County. Staff recommends acceptance contingent upon a staff's approval with a two-year warranty period from the date of written acceptance of the as-built drawing.
Move to consent.
Second.
Move.
Next, we have an easement plat for Hollis Creek at Greenpoint off of Wrightsboro Road west of Appleton Harlem Highway at Pumpkin Center. This is for the acceptance of improvements to include a water line and its respective easement as depicted on a plat prepared by James G. Swift and Associates dated September eighteenth, twenty nineteen, and revised on May twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Larry Prather Senior submitted the Larry Prather Utility Easement as-built plat back in January of twenty twenty-one. The water line easement was accepted by the board on February second of twenty twenty-one, but the deed was never recorded. Mr. Prather has now submitted a new plat for the subdivision known as Hollis Creek at Greenpoint. He is requesting that the commission rescind the previous approval and consider accepting the water line easement as presented on the plat from James G. Swift and Associates dated May twelfth, twenty twenty-one. So apparently, on the first easement that y'all approved, it was only a single water line easement. Since then, he's broken that, and he never recorded that first one. Since then, he's broken it. And two easements as part of the Hollis Creek at Greenpoint, and he's resubmitted, requested the board's acceptance. Staff recommends acceptance of the water line easement contingent upon staff's approval with a two-year warranty period from the date of written acceptance of the as-built drawings.
Is this line gonna be future-proofed to address future needs that are there in terms of the volume and requirements?
In Hollis Creek itself?
Yes.
Hollis Creek is a small development, it's a large lot. It backs up to Greenpoint. Greenpoint has actually been through all the reviews. The Greenpoint is set for water, or its water supply. Hollis Creek is a large lot, it's been a little impacted. I don't see a whole lot of expansion of Hollis Creek. I don't see how it can expand.
Okay.
Those are big lots.
All right.
Move to consent.
Second.
The next item we have is a final plat for Quaker Knoll Phase One off Wrightsboro Road near the intersection of Hamilton Road. This is for the acceptance of improvements to include the road, storm, lift station, water and sewer improvements, along with the right-of-way and easements with these improvements as specified and depicted on a plat prepared by James G. Swift and Associates dated May twentieth, twenty twenty-one. This is a thirty-three, this is a subdivision with thirty-three new single-family parcels located on nineteen point seven seven acres. Property is owned R2 with a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet. The average lot size for this development is sixteen thousand five hundred and sixty-six square feet. Staff recommends acceptance of said improvements contingent upon staff's approval with a two-year warranty period from the date of written acceptance of the as-built drawings.
This is off of Wrightsboro at Hamilton where all of this in that same, a lot of conversation about some point in time, and requirement, this come off of the same.
It's actually off of Wrightsboro Road. This is not on Hamilton, it's near Hamilton, I believe, but it's not on Hamilton. It's on Wrightsboro Road.
Turn off Wrightsboro to get Hamilton to access.
Correct. This has got its own entrance off of Wrightsboro. This is Phase One, so it is, it's gonna get other phases.
I was about to say, it doesn't qualify for a lift station.
It, the first part that we're accepting today does not, however, the master plan does qualify for lift station.
And that's already been filed?
Yes.
Lots along, behind.
No, sir.
No.
No, sir, that one has not started yet.
So what is the size of this ultimately?
Off the top of your head, Scott.
Going out, it's on the right-hand side.
Fifty and thirty-three don't make a hundred.
That's just Phase Two. It continues to grow. I asked the same question when it came across my desk.
What, wasn't this the subdivision that we required a connection through the back? Plan that backs up to this?
You'll look at page one forty-seven on my PDF. I'm not sure. Assuming y'all have the same PDF I have, it shows that connection where it keeps extending out into the next property.
I'll make a motion to move to consent, but I want to confirm the number of houses that are in this project.
We'll get that to you.
Want to move it out into debate?
It can be consent. I can always push it to debate if I need to. I just want to confirm.
Right, we'll get that to you.
Get to you.
Not a problem.
Yeah, second with that confirmation.
Okay. I'll move.
Okay, the last item we have for you today is for the countywide pavement condition and evaluation survey pavement management system development. This is with SNME. The staff has met with several consultants over the course of the last year or so to better understand how we can get a handle on where we currently stand today with our system countywide, and how to best apply available funding to optimize that funding, make it go as far as it can. And of all the consultants we've met with, SNME was the most responsive to what we believe our needs are. So we asked SNME to develop a proposal to basically go out and survey all eight hundred and twelve centerline miles of all roadways. Basically, assign a pavement condition index, where they evaluate it and sign it in text. They will also help us put together a pavement management software, a program that is very user-friendly. Work with commission, we can work with staff to determine what our priorities are. You know, if we want to concentrate on roads that have the highest ADT or the highest, the most houses on them, or arterials, collectors, you know, whatever it is, and we can break it down by district. But this helps us evaluate the existing conditions, develop pavement management software, and get trained in this software. This, SNME's proposal to do this, to help us get this off the ground, is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We feel sure that this would, it would make sense to do the actual survey or resurvey every two to five years. We don't think it's gonna be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars every two to five years. This is a lot of upfront capital costs, so to speak, with the pavement management software, licensing, training, getting it off the ground. But this is something that we feel is greatly needed to help us identify where best to spend our monies, our transportation dollars. As currently, we're putting a lot on staff saying, where do we need to do this? And where do we have this much money? We have X much, X amount of money. Where do we need to spend this? And we send staff out to certain places, basically where we get the most complaints, which is effective to some degree, but I think it makes sense to have a, we think it makes sense to have a baseline or foundation, foundational pavement management software so we can be proactive instead of reactive. Staff's recommending approval of this proposal with SNME, and the amount of, SNME and the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Couple of things real quick.
Yes, sir.
For moving forward and trying to get us on this question, I've been constantly, how are we gonna allocate these million dollars to go back and address our roads? Just a number from conversation, we couldn't get there. We couldn't get to the amount of money that we were proposing that it was gonna take. Number, millions and millions of dollars for twenty years to try and go through the county and redo it or whatever, and then start all over, whatever. So I appreciate you doing this. I'm not a big fan of studies and whatever. This will get us on track, so we'll know where to allocate. Like you and I were talking on Friday, limited, ten years. All the funding, we're gonna get ten years out of that. L-MIG, we get for every year, but it's not enough. And then SLOSS, a five-year plan, whatever. So I think we really, this would take us a long way to get us knowing where those dollars allocated, because every commissioner in here gets calls about their streets falling apart in their neighborhood. We need to know which one, not just because I'm getting blown up, but because that's the.
Sure. And just to be clear, this would be a tool that we would use to basically present you with the objective list, empirical data, that, empirical data that shows the shape of our roads or the condition of our roads. We will put that list before you all each time we have improvement dollars to spend for you to make the final decision. If something doesn't make sense, then we're gonna have staff go and check on that, investigate it further. Just a tool to help us get a little further along and be proactive.
Saying here, the initial one-year license for pavement management software is provided. I deal with.
That's exactly where I'm headed with this.
Kristen, can you walk up? This is Kristen Nicholson with SNME.
While she's walking up, Kyle mentioned that we had talked to several engineers, and I have. I've talked to several different firms about how to do this. I will say that when Kristen walked in with her staff, and they showed us how they do it, it was almost an instant, this is the way to go. We're so far ahead of everybody else, so this is a really good tool. Just wanna throw that out there.
Thank you, and good morning.
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 Can you talk about the licensing and the renewal and the cost, et cetera?
Sure. So the software we use is called Street Saver, and it would integrate with CityWorks, the, what you guys currently use.
Do you own Street Saver?
We do. We have a license, and then you guys would have a license as well.
So it's not your software?
It is not our software, no. But we would use that software in order to go around, assess all the conditions of the county's roads, all eight hundred and twelve miles. We'd use that to then integrate, come up with budgetary decisions for how that money was spent, as Kyle was explaining. So that would be a renewal every year that would be on you guys for the renewal of the subscription.
How much is that?
I think the renewal's about five hundred dollars.
Okay, well, that's different.
Get that in a minute, Mr. Please. Okay, I think it's something that's good for the county long-term, but I didn't software, whatever the number was.
Sure.
So we'll go through this process and then have a package at the end. And then, once a year, what do we have to do?
It's as determined by the board in coordination with staff. So every, you know, if we want to reevaluate the roads every two years or five years, you know, it would be a function of what we decide. But once we have this pavement management software, we can, we can use it as much as we need, as much as we need to. So if we decide we want to look at, we have some L-MIG dollars, and we want to see how far those L-MIG dollars can go, we can say, well, let's look at these ten roads. And this software, correct me if I'm wrong, Kristen, we can also say, well, Bridge Road just needs to be a X amount of miles that'll be in the software, and we want to do a two-inch overlay. So we say two-inch overlay on Bridge Road, it'll pop us out a pretty good budgetary number to do that.
That's correct.
What's the difference between Phase One and Phase Two?
So there's two phases shown in the proposal. We've opted for this first round to just go with absolute baseline to get us up and running. There's three tasks in Phase One, actually, and we opted with one of the three, the three tasks. The other two are options to do GPR, which is basically where they drag a trailer behind the vehicle that's doing the assessments, and it scans the road, does ground penetrating radar, and gives an idea of the density of the roadway section. We don't think that's necessary. If we find value in that at a later date, we may opt to do that on certain roads at a different evaluation or next survey, so to speak. The second phase would be if we were to do the GPR, which we're not, it would be to actually process that data.
All right, so Phase One is a hundred and thirty grand, not a hundred and thirty plus twenty plus fifty?
Correct. Just a hundred, we're asking for.
Will we analyze the data if we're not doing the?
So the GPR is where they do a scan, and they give us the density. What they're actually doing, I'll let you dive into the PCI and pavement condition next, I'm sure you can.
Sure. So the Phase One would be the pavement condition index, everything Kyle's already explained. That would be us doing the inventory of the system.
How do you do that inventory is what I'm asking.
We do, we have tablets, and we have engineers go out and do a pavement condition assessment.
Any technology involved, or is that eyeball?
It's a little bit of both. We have cameras attached to our vehicles. We've got inclinometers attached to the vehicle, kind of measuring as we go. And then we have a pavement engineer doing the assessment with checklists as he's going through each of the roads, and that takes about five to six weeks to do all eight hundred and twelve miles. And the output of that would be a map that you guys could integrate with GIS. There's lists, it would have a varied level of detail for exactly what's going on with your roadways. And then Phase Two would be the assessment of that data, like what our recommendations would be, you know, following that.
So there's software, and there's, obviously, I get the riding, the eight hundred miles, whatever the case is. I'm trying, it's more than just, you have engineers looking at an alligator road, saying, well, my assumption is this. There's technology involved in this. It actually does, I'm trying to understand the difference between, does it, are we measuring all the depths of the roads and doing all that? Or is this?
We're not, we're not scanning. We've looked into that, actually doing the laser scanning of the cracks and the microcracks. And the technology, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't far enough along to really add any value out of that. So what they actually do is they video all the road, they visually inspect all the road, and they sign, they assign a pavement condition index, which is one of the variables that we will use in the pavement management software to determine what roads we feel is, feel are most in need of repair.
I'll make a motion to move to debate, because I still.
I agree.
I'm trying to figure this out. Of course, I'm not an engineer. But what I'm hearing is, we're gonna pay somebody a hundred and thirty grand to drive our roads and tell us what they think we need to do. 130 grand to drive our roads and tell us what they think we need to do. I'm trying to figure out where the difference is between us having our staff do it.
Well, they're trying to get a pay, we're trying to get a pavement management software off the ground, and this gives us the foundation, the baseline for all our roads county-wide, instead of just saying, Mr. Barry, go out and inspect these five roads for me, and let me know what you think today, and then tomorrow, doing the same thing. This gives us county-wide an evaluation of all the roads at one time, and gets pavement management software off the ground, and gets us trained to utilize it.
Make a motion, we move it to debate?
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, passing out for your consideration. This is a rental agreement between the Board of Commissioners and the State Properties Commission. This has to do with our judicial split. This is for lease space in the Justice Center Annex for the community, Department of Community Supervision, which is probation. We have found them a home on the second floor, and we're actually in the process of doing renovations now. This was sent over to us to approve, but as I mentioned earlier, as a result of the temporary restraining order, we couldn't work on this anymore. Our work on this had already been done. There were a couple of things that, that when they sent over, we changed. One was the fact they wanted eight successive one-year terms. We cut that back down to four to make it more consistent with the rest of our terms of leases. There was some question about insurance that was addressed, and then there was another question about the ability to evict or end the lease, and we always want that ability. We want to give them an opportunity if they want to leave, and of course, if they do, they got to return it to the pre-lease condition. So there's a couple of things that we've added in here. We have not sent this back to the State Properties Commission yet because we couldn't because of the TRO, but, but myself and Mr. Driver have been through this lease, we've made our changes. What we would like to do today is have you approve this lease in its current form, and then if the State Properties Commission agrees, we can move forward. If they disagree with this, then we could bring this back for modification, and we can, you know, go back and forth with them. But we are desperately trying to hit our July 1 deadline. As you know, Senate Bill 9 was passed, and there is a law that requires us to have a new judicial circuit standing up. Mr. Kennedy and his team, and really all of our team, has been working very diligently to do that, but we've been on pause for the last couple of days, so this is the next step. I will say that there is no cost associated with this, we are not charging them anything to lease this space, we just, we want them in our building. So, staff recommends approval of the rental agreement between the county and the State Properties Commission.
Move to consent. Second.
Driver.
Yes, sir. Water utilities included year-to-date budget reports and water and sewer construction project reports in this packet, and I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Are we working on our sewer plan for the future, water and sewer?
Yes, we are, yes, sir. We have a meeting tomorrow about that, actually.
No questions? I have none, sir.
You're geared up and ready to work in Harlem and everything?
Yes, sir, we've been kind of laying the foundation to hit the ground running July 1st. We've surveyed and done GIS on the entire sewer system. Their engineer had the water system already in, out, said already done that, so we have that from them. We've been putting some SCADA in key places that we need, wastewater plant, different things, monitor, or our system now.
We completed the clear-cut line, did we have new fixtures here that are going to allow us to tender service in the Harlem area?
We can, yes, sir. It's, if you remember, we bit clear-cut water line, we stopped at the city limits, didn't extend on to the existing water line because the city wanted the opportunity to expand their system. Now we can go in and tie it together and maybe completely that, excuse me, complete that loop and...
All right, very good.
This one, I recommend we move that on to the full board, one indicative item.
All right, here we are, adjourned.